I'd like to call the Mammell City Council Meeting to order. I will let you know that Councilmember Saunders will not be with us tonight, just due to some circumstances. And then I am going to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for the rain that we received yesterday, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our citizens as they endure some heat, Lord, and help those that are suffering from it to get through this, Lord. We'd ask you to be with the victims of violence, Lord. All throughout our country, Lord, there's violence throughout our land, and we'd ask you to be with those victims and be with the family members of those that have died due to this violence, Lord, and comfort them as only you can. We'd also ask you to be with our first responders as they serve our citizens, Lord, as they put themselves in harm's way on a daily basis, Lord, to serve our citizens and respond to calls that sometimes they don't even know what they're going to encounter when they get there, Lord. We'd ask you to bless them and keep them safe and be with their families as they leave them each night for a shift, Lord. We'd also ask you to be with the servicemen and women that are defending our country, our rights and our liberties, Lord. We'd ask you to bless them and keep them safe and bless their families if they're deployed overseas, Lord. We'd ask you at this time to be with us as we conduct our meeting. Help us to be tolerant of one another, Lord, and not become divisive. We'd ask you to help us to make wise decisions and lead us in whatever you need us to go, Lord. We'd ask that you be with us as we leave here and help us to be an inspiration to those around us that we come in contact, Lord, and that they see a little bit of you in us, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no special guests or announcements tonight. We have the approval of the minutes of the June 18 regular meeting. All the councilmembers have a copy of those minutes in your packet. Any corrections or additions to those minutes? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I did have one question.
If I would ask that y'all pull your microphones down, because I tried to watch the videos since I managed to watch the last meeting. I kept having to turn my speaker like as high as it would go and people would then somebody would talk into a microphone and it'd scare me to death. But please, if you're going to talk, pull your microphones down. Yes, sir, Councilmember Mosley.
Can you hear me?
I can.
All right, thank you. Down on page two, at the very bottom, it says, "Councilmember Saunders made a motion to reconsider resolution such and such." Councilmember Mosley seconded the vote. The motion failed one to seven. And I was the yes vote, but I was thinking Alderman Saunders also voted yes. I don't know if anybody remembers. Okay.
I watched twice and he seconded, he made the motion, but he did not vote.
He did not vote. Okay. All right then. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
It's been motioned as second that we approve the minutes for the June 18 meeting as submitted. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I have no public comment cards tonight on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda, so we'll move on. Financial statement review, that is done at the second meeting of each month. Department reports. We're going to hear from building permits and code enforcement tonight. First, we'll have Mr. Jim Morley.
Good evening. I am Jim Morley, Director of the Building, Code Enforcement and Permits Department, better known as Yard Nazis or Gestapo, plenty of other terms that we are called. But most of the time I'm in this council, I'm talking about some code enforcement issue, and of course, that's a big part of what we do. About a third of our time, 25% to a third of the time, is spent on code enforcement. When I started and took over the department, code enforcement was more of a complaint-driven venture. We have now turned it around where we are driving the streets and trying to look for those violations before they're reported and before they fester and become, you know, angry citizens, you know, angry at each other. So it's worked out a lot better now that we get, when we do get calls, pretty much we have already heard of the issue and are working on a solution. So that's, of course, now we're working on a lot of tall grass, abandoned houses. Of course, fences are always, always an issue. It seems like when we're working on 20 items and can get those knocked out, 20 more happen. So there's always going to be code enforcement issues out there, but, you know, we'll just continue to fight the good fight. That's all we can do. Trent is doing an excellent job there. As far as the building department and permits is really about 75% of what we do. In the commercial area and industrial right now, I'm doing a plan review for two new buildings at the Villas at Riverpoint Apartments. It's 56 new units, four stories on the riverside of the complex, nice views, should be a nice addition there. We've just gotten through with Kimberly-Clark, did a big expansion. We haven't gotten a lot of new structures in the industrial park, but we have a lot of investment in the ones that are there, which is excellent, I think. Big expansion at Kimberly-Clark, a new lab, office complex out front. Across the street is Molex. They just added a new roof and put in a big clean room and some bridge cranes for some new customers that they're planning on having. And I just released the permits for Stericycle there at Bringley and Murphy Drive. So they'll be cooking along here pretty quick. Of course, Dillard's is a new roof and a new racking system since they've had to do away with their little robots that they've been using, and that's a pretty impressive renovation they're doing. The rest of the time is spent on residential, and that's where we spend a lot of time because not only are we permitting and enforcing the residential codes, building codes, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical, but we have to do a lot of education because there's no requirement for the state for any education or any experience for builders. I'm talking residential builders or blocklayers or framers or anything. So as the codes change, most are clueless as to what they're supposed to do. And our intent in permitting and doing those inspections is to be a third-party advocate for our citizens. They don't really know the work that we've put in when they move into a new house to make sure that it's built properly, but we really feel that it's calling. I've got two good inspectors that do a tremendous job. And so we've got some pretty steady growth in residential. We've got some new subdivisions coming online. Mr. Brock is looking at a new one tonight. He's an excellent builder, so we're very much glad to have him in the city. And that's kind of where we stand right now. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Morley? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, we'll hear from Mr. Jack Stowe, who's not a department head, but he's in charge of what we call special projects. And basically, he can probably tell you a whole lot more about that, but basically, it's anything that nobody else is responsible for, Jack gets, so, yeah.
That is correct. I am the special projects manager and do a little bit of everything. Wanted to speak about a few specific projects tonight, though. We received a grant some time ago to build sidewalks on Edgewood Drive from Millwood all the way up almost to the community center. And that's taken longer to get it going and everything, but we have got everything done. And then we got another grant. And so what we applied for the second time was a smaller grant, but it also ties into the same sidewalks. So we'll be adding that to it. We had to get permission from the Highway Department to add this. We have that right now. It's in the hands of the engineers, and hopefully this week we'll hear something and have it to bid, hopefully within the next few weeks, or at least have the advertising started. We also have one other grant kind of hanging out there. It's a wetland walk trail grant behind the middle school, and it's run into some snags too, but, which is normal. We had to get a 404 permit because we're right next to the wetlands, and we do have that, so it's moving again. And of course, both, all three of these grants are 80/20. We do have to pay some of the benching funds. We also, one of the things that we've been working on recently is the roundabout project on Club Manor and South Odom. We have received RFQs. We reviewed them. We picked the top three, and right now we're in the negotiation phase of it. So I really can't say who we picked because they may not make the negotiation phase. But that's moving along real well, too. We really had a lot of input. Several of these companies had extensive experience in roundabouts. One of them had a man from, one of their vice presidents was from Europe, and he was telling us how in Europe, that's just not a thing, you know? Building roundabouts is just building a road. Nobody really gets upset about it, but he did point out, he's been in Arkansas about 20 years maybe, and he did point out that you do have to educate people on roundabouts here. So we'll be addressing that at some point in the process. We looked at several different possible designs, but of course, we'll design our own once we pick an engineer. And one of the things that I've been working on quite a bit, it seems like this year we're having more building maintenance issues with this building. HVAC, plumbing, just everything you'd expect in an old building. I don't think there's a danger of us going over budget, but I think we're going to be very close on some of them. We're only halfway through the year, and we're more than halfway through the money on some of the budgets. But, you know, that's just part of it. You know, we've, some years we don't use all we have, or I mean, we don't have too bad of a problems with our equipment. I also work with the janitor, or with the custodians here at City Hall, Police Department and Public Works. We've had two of them. One of them's been here for four years, ever since we started hiring janitors, and the other's been here a couple of months. Both of them are real solid. I expect to keep them both for a good long while. And that's about all I have to cover as far as that. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Councilmember Scott?
Mr. Stowe, we had a bond to remodel this building and move courts and that kind of thing. Can you tell us where we are on that?
We've received the RFQs, and, you know, it's the mayor's call, but I believe we're going to be reviewing those next. That's, should be next on the list to do. And then that process begins, which isn't bad to have them staggered, because if you try two of them at once, it's, you know, a lot of times you get bogged down.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, that's moving along. Once we review it, we'll have more to announce.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said that we have RFQs on both of those projects. Is that for the design, or is that actually for building?
As far as the design, do we have, is building part of that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, the RFQs are only for design. I mean, you do RFQs, the engineers and the architects design the building, then we bid out the construction phases.
Okay. I didn't know if you had to RFQ the actual building.
No.
You just bid it out. Okay.
Bid it out, per state statutes.
Right. I just couldn't remember. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Mr. Stowe, would you repeat what you said about the property behind the middle school? I missed it. I'm sorry.
The, we've got a grant to do a wetland walk trail, and right behind the middle school is some property they own between them and the wetlands, and we also own the property next to it. So we're able to build this grant on property that we own entirely. Once you get to the wetlands, there's a 50-foot buffer there that we own. So we'll be going along the middle school's property, but we won't actually be on it.
Do you have an ETA for that?
I, you know, I used to be better at guessing at these things, but the Highway Department, there's so many things that come back on us now. It's like, okay, we also want this, we also want that. And a lot of times, it's kind of redundant. They've asked us to prove that we own the right-of-way or we own, you know, in this case, the wetland buffer and the land next to it, and we'll send that. And then halfway through the project, it'll pop up again and says, by the way, we need, you know, proof that you own that. So it's kind of, you know, it's kind of hard to really estimate. And also the 404 permits, it's anybody's guess how long they take.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Stowe? No? Thank you very much. Next item is procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Still move.
Have a motion second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. First item is, under unfinished business, is the third reading of ordinance number 956, amending chapter 62 of the Mammell City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 956, and ordinance amending chapter 62 of the Mammell City Code to account for changes in billing and collection of the solid waste collection fee, removing a criminal penalty for non-payment, authorizing the mayor to enter into a billing service agreement with Central Arkansas Water and for other purposes.
The question was asked last time that if, could they turn off somebody's water if the solid waste fees not collected? As I understand, what happens is when you send a check into Central Arkansas Water, they start with everything else on the bill first. So if you pay half your bill, your solid waste fee's going to get paid, and then your wastewater's going to get paid, and then the last thing they apply it to is the water. So basically, you didn't pay your water bill, is what you didn't do. And then that gives them the authority to shut off the water. So that's where that comes into play, as I understand it. So, and so I just wanted to clarify that since that question was asked at the last meeting. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a motion that we accept ordinance 956.
Second.
We have a motion second to adopt ordinance number 55, no, 956. Where we going way back?
You're making me feel good.
Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes. All right. Motion passes. Next item is the third reading of ordinance number 957, amendment to the land use plan. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only, please.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 957, and ordinance amending the Mammell Land Use Plan and Map and for other purposes.
This is on third reading, and I know Mr. Darrell Brock is in the audience, who is the proposed developer of this property, and his engineer, Colaway, is also here. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I wanted to ask him how many houses, I could have counted all that, but I can't see it that well, are going to be in that subdivision? And are you going to build it all in one phase, or are there going to be multiple phases?
Mr. Brock, state your name and address for the record, please.
Darrell Brock, 18 South Shore, Conway, Arkansas. 59.
Okay.
59 houses. Now, we're going to develop the whole thing at once.
At one time.
And then build as...
Okay. And is this the plat you intend to submit? Is that what that is?
That is it.
Okay. So that planning commission may see that next month. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Yeah, I've been, I was having second thoughts again, but as far as the R1 versus PRD, but I think you're going to build houses, so I'll vote for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a motion to accept ordinance 957.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 957, amendment to the land use plan. Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Holt?
I just had one brief question for the gentleman. Out of curiosity, I noticed at the storefront operation, I think it's butched back to your property, it's in the little corner shopping center or next to the Chinese restaurant. Is that by any chance part of your, is it just a coincidence that it happened to be for sale at the same time, or it's been sold, I guess, sale pending? I just wondered. No big deal.
He's talking about where the old print shop used to be, and that is not part of this development.
Okay. I just wondered, just coincidence it was, had been sold also, so that's a good deal. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or discussions on ordinance number 957? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is third reading of ordinance number 958, amendment to the master zoning map, and this is on the same piece of property that you just heard the land use plan amendment to. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 958, and ordinance amending the Mammell zoning map and for other purposes.
Is it my turn tonight? Thank you, Mayor. I want to make a motion that we accept or adopt ordinance 958.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 958, amendment to the master zoning map. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaprazan?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. In this, I mean, I'm going to move on to new business, but what I do need to tell you is that at your desk, I laid a preliminary draft of an ordinance, and it's not in our standard format, and it's not numbered or anything like that. But what that is, that is the bond ordinance that we will have to pass at the next council meeting. This council will need to pass. Let me say that. We are waiting on the ratings right now from S&amp;P, who is rates the, they will rate the city's financial stability or availability for these bonds. So we've been in numerous phone conversations and discussions with them to get the rating. That should be released by the end of this week, which would be the 6th, and then the 9th. The Stevens will start prepricing the bond issue, and then on the 16th, they will actually set the pricing for that bond issue. And that pricing is only good for that one day. So that pricing gets done on the 16th, the council needs to approve it that night. That's why we gave you a copy of the proposed ordinance. It's got a lot of blanks in it, as you can see, but it's the ordinance in general. I mean, if you flip to page three, you see that the interest rate is just a blank column there on page three. So, but I wanted you to be able to see this because we will be asking for the council to suspend the rules and have the second and third reading. Now, someone says, why do we have to rush this through and everything? Number one is, they won't hold the pricing. So even if you don't, if you said, well, we're not going to do it on the 16th, if we waited till the next council meeting, which would be August the 2nd, I think, or something like that, it'd be new pricing. So that's what we get into, is if we don't pass it the day that they price the bonds. And what we're trying to do is set up a closing for August the 28th, I believe, let me make sure of that. August the 20... Yes, August the 28th would be the bond closing. That would then make the funds available. Currently, we're on target with the Highway Department that we, the project will bid in September on the interchange. I actually was in discussions with the right-of-way division today at the RDOT. I refer to them as the Highway Department, but they're actually Arkansas Department of Transportation now. Last week, there were several Highway Department, Arkansas Department of Transportation vehicles out there, and they were working on the utility relocations. And so it seems like we're on target, and the interesting thing is, the lady that is over the right-of-way division, she used to be in the consultant coordinating division, and she was saying, Mayor Watson, she said, you and I have been working on this project for a long time, and now she's working at it from different angles. She says, but I'm really glad we're at this point. You know, so we're almost, we're two months away, basically, from bidding that project. And so she was excited about it and went in our discussions about it. So just giving y'all heads up, I mean, I know we're doing ordinance introduction, or we've done that in the past, but I felt like that if I gave you a copy of this preliminary draft, and it was printed more than, you know, it was printed today at my computer, that's why it says July 2 at 3:53 PM. So I'm just, full disclosure, it was done about a week ago, but I was trying to figure out how to do it. But I do want you to have it. Take it home. If you have any questions, send them to me. I'll get ahold of Mr. Spivey or our bond underwriters at Stevens, Leanne Burnett, and we could get those questions answered for you.
Sounds good.
Councilmember Mosley?
I assume this is similar to what we've done in the past.
Yes, sir. The difference, and Mr. City Attorney and I talked about that, the only difference is, this is sales and use tax. We've always done property taxes. And so we talked about going and pulling one of those, but I was afraid that'd really get confusing. And so we went with the sales and use tax one, and so that's, it's very similar, the bond pricing and all that's all going to be very similar. The language may reference different codes in the state statutes and things like that because of the different tax that we're using. So, you know, full disclosure, I'm not going to tell you that it's identical to what we've seen before, but it's very similar in the way it talks about when the bonds mature and the interest rates and all that.
All right. Thank you. Does the fact that they're already doing some work, have they approved our final engineering plan or whatever for the interchange?
They have.
They have?
Yes.
So it's all approved?
Yeah, yeah. To the best of my knowledge, it's all been approved. Let me hedge that. I don't know that I've seen a letter back from them, but I know they've got the 100% plans.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
It's almost surreal.
Yeah.
It is. It is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's one of those things that, yeah, is it really going to happen? So, yeah. But we're very, very close on that thing. So, and that's, you know, I made the comment today, if you'd asked me in 2007, would I still be talking about it, you know, building it in 2018? I'd have told you, no way. You know, we'd be driving on that thing. But as Jack said, it takes a lot of time sometimes to get these construction projects moving. All right. Moving on to Mayor's comments. Just wanted y'all to be aware of the Force Fest activities on July the 4th. So you've got a copy of those in your packet, but I just want to tell you, all you got to do is show up at 4:30 for the parade, and you don't have to leave until about 10 o'clock that night, when the fireworks are over. But it, the parade, we, every year, we struggle to get entries, but we got entries this year, and they, we had 14 as of Friday, I believe, and so the parade is on. So come out and get lots of candy from the parade. And then at 5 o'clock, the, all the festival commences inside the park. At 5:30, we'll have the cardboard boat race sponsored by the Mammell Area Chamber of Commerce, and that's always a great event and well-tended. So you can move from the parade right to the cardboard boat race, and then we'll be presenting the awards, and then we'll have performances by tutus and tennis shoes, and then we'll give the best sinking award at, you know, 6:40, I think, is what we're going to do. Now, we'll also give the people that won the races, and then we'll have music by canvas, and then we'll have the fireworks. At 8 o'clock, music by canvas, and then at 9:30, we'll have the fireworks. But I also want to remind everybody that you're allowed to discharge fireworks in Mammell from 4:30 until 10:30 only on July the 4th. So, that doesn't mean July 3rd, or July 5th, or Saturday. But you are allowed to discharge those only if you do it up on private property, and there can't be more than 25 people in a group. So, if there's 23 of you, you're good, but if there's 26, 25 or more, you're in trouble. You shouldn't be discharging them. And that does mean, that means you can shoot them from your driveway. Do not shoot them from public roadways, or commercial or industrial property, or parking lots, or parks, or fields, or sidewalks. So, you're pretty limited in how you can do it. I'm sure our officers will give you a warning the first time, but the second time, you may be paying to shoot those fireworks a double, you know. So, but it is, and please stop at 10:30. I mean, people have to get up and go to work the next day, so I'm sure our phones will be ringing off the hook down at dispatch on, at about 10:40, saying, hey, they haven't quit yet. And then, we'll be chasing around, trying to catch them, the ones that are firing fireworks off. All right, did you have something, Chief, or, no, okay. All right, and then, I also want to make you aware of, you have a letter in your package also from North Rock Wastewater. And February of this year, the North Rock Wastewater completed the removal of the sludge out of the bile solids pond. So, there's a big tree, there's a big pond out by Public Works, and it's basically where all the wastewater goes to and settles out before they treat it. And that had developed a pretty big sludge in the bottom, a large amount of sludge. So, they removed that. And the way they do it normally in North Rock is, they charge their people so much to remove that on a regular basis. That had never been charged in Mammell. So, what they did this time is, it was written in the contract with CAW that this first removal would be paid with a surcharge by the people of Mammell. From this time forward, after this surcharge is paid off, it'll be done on a regular maintenance basis, and we won't have to pay a surcharge because it's included into our billing. But at this point in time, it's going to cost all the residential customers 90 cents a month for that surcharge. And earlier this year, Central Arkansas Water removed about a $2 and something surcharge. So, it's a net still that the people's bill is going to be less than it was a year ago. And they expect it'll take about three years to pay for this $337,000 fee that they had to pay a contractor to remove the sludge. So, just want to make everybody aware of that, and they're going to start collecting that in August. So, that will be on the August bill, and it's going to be listed as a sludge surcharge fee. So, you can tell them, there's a letter in the council packet if they need to know more about it. And I'm sure we'll get calls here about it. All right. The last thing by me tonight is, I've got a statement to read. And basically, it says, "To the citizens of Mammell, today I'm announcing that I will not be seeking a fourth term as Mayor of Mammell. This decision has been a difficult one for me, and I want to thank all of my many friends and supporters who have encouraged me in this journey over the past 12 years. I've prayed for direction in this decision, and I know that this is the right choice. Even though it is with great sadness that I make this announcement, I am afraid that I no longer have the passion for this job that I once had. And I do not want to take on the task as mayor without giving it my all. There are unfinished projects that I would like to see completed, but I know that these projects can be led by someone else, and they will succeed without me. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve as your mayor for almost 12 years. There are still days that I love this job, but there are a few days that I wonder, why did I ever want this job? We have accomplished many projects in our city, improved many facilities, and passed three bond initiatives to fund our city's infrastructure needs. I'm very proud to be part of the history and hopefully, the future of Mammell. The new interchange will allow for economic and community development that will propel Mammell to even greater heights in the years to come. I will always know that I was a part of that project. I've always kept public safety as a top priority in my administration. We've grown the police and fire departments by adding new technology, needed personnel, and by building new stations for the operations. We have some of the finest police officers and best firefighters in the state of Arkansas. This has been the best job that I've ever had. And I'm not, and I'm not sure that I can find a position that will be as challenging. However, I am seeking out other career opportunities that will still keep me active. Thank you to all the citizens who have put their trust in me and voted for me at the polls. I hope that I've not disappointed you, but I promise you, at all times, I've put the interests of this community first in all of my decisions. I want to thank the many city council members that have supported me through the years and have made my job easier. I've worked with two city clerks who have made my job easier. I've worked with two city attorneys who have always given me prudent advice. I want to thank our staff at the City of Mammell, especially the department heads, who always try to do their best for the city in all that they do. I could not have done my job without them. Most of all, I need to thank my family for sharing me with the City of Mammell. My wife, Debbie, my daughter, Amanda, and her husband, Nathan, and my four wonderful grandchildren, Reagan, Lucas, Jackson, and Kayden. They have given up family time to allow me to serve as Mammell's mayor for the past 11-plus year. I've been blessed to live in Mammell for over 22 years and plan to continue to live in the city and be a part of this community. Thank you for allowing me to serve this great city of Mammell as your mayor. Sincerely, Michael Watson."
You're bursing me.
All right, I don't know what to say after that, other than we'll do the Planning Commission report following the Planning Commission meeting in August, I believe. That'll be the next time we have a Planning Commission meeting in July.
July 26.
July 26. And who has that, do we know?
Me.
Councilmember Anderson, all right. All right, any councilmembers' comments? Councilmember Holt.
First of all, now, I'm doing, Mr. Mayor, I regret to hear your statement. As I've told you in your office before, that I had the honor and pleasure to being able to donate to your campaign, the very first person that donated in your first term. I also shared with you that I've always supported you, but we didn't all, I didn't always agree with everything you did, so, but that's okay. My loyalty never waned. This is anticlimactic. I have my own statement, if I may read it briefly, and it won't take but 30, 60 seconds. Maybe I won't follow, I, sorry. When I met, became a resident of Mammell in 1992, there were no red lights on Mammell Boulevard. Harvest Foods was our only grocery store. North Odom Boulevard and South Odom Boulevard were a long way from each other. Mammell had a managerial instead of a mayoral form of government. As time went by, I was able to buy my house in 1999. The next year, the government changed to a mayoral form of government. Being inspired by the new community in which I had become a part of, I decided to run for Odom. As it turned out, there were six votes that separated three of us. I lost. I didn't go away, however. I was hooked on the thought of community service. I remained a community activist for 15 years until the door opened and I became a city council member. It is an honor and privilege to represent the people of Ward 4, as well as the city at large. I have tried to serve my constituents honestly and sincerely. I believe Mammell's greatest years, most exciting years, lie ahead. It takes more than brick and mortar to make a great city. Greatness is on the shoulders of the elected officials and the will of the people who elected them. I want to continue my dream of being a part of this exciting adventure. Therefore, it is with this commitment, I am announcing my intention to run for my position of Ward 4, Position 2, for 2019. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt, and thank you for your continued commitment to the City of Mammell. Any other city councilmembers' comments? Mr. City Attorney.
In a back-to-business moment, I wanted to point out, there has been discussion in the past about internet sales tax. For those that don't know, the Supreme Court of the United States recently ruled on June 21st, in their case, South Dakota v. Wayfair, that essentially, the long and short of it is, they said that states can require remote sellers with no presence in the state to collect and remit a sales tax, which is something that's been pretty different to what's happened before. So, just, so you know, that doesn't mean there is now an internet sales tax, but it now means the state could pass legislation, if it so chose, to go forward with that. And I just wanted to bring that up because I know it's something that this council's discussed before. And I'm sure not everyone here nerds out on the Supreme Court opinions from day to day. So, I figured I'd share that. That was all, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, is that just on the state level, or is it in a, on a community, I mean, municipal?
Well, it's state and local for those municipalities that have the ability to charge sales tax. So, our sales tax that we charge would be handled just like everything else, and that would be collected through DFNA.
Okay.
And I, as far as I know, I don't think the city would have to do something separate.
Okay, that's what I'm.
But the state has to pass legislation in order for it to be collected in Arkansas. The legislature started to do it, well, there was a bill in 2017, and it passed the Senate, but it failed in the House because some of the representatives felt like that it wasn't legal to do. And they were waiting on this Supreme Court decision that was heard in South Dakota, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scott.
I was wondering if we ever found out what that department store money was? On the, no. And they took some of it back, but not all of it?
They did take some of it back, but not all of it, that is correct.
It's just a happy mystery so far.
Well, that's the world of DFNA. They won't report to us individual tax information, so. Okay, Madam City Clerk, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
All right, you had a copy of your sales tax report. I will state that they were up for the month on city sales tax and slightly up on, I believe, county also. And we're, right now, I think we're going to, we're looking to finish the year at at least $200,000 more than we had budgeted for on city sales tax, if the trend continues on what it has so far. All right, if there's no other, oh, and I did want to point out that the legislative audit, our legislative audit has accepted our 2016 audit, so, and there's a letter in the back of your council bag. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still move.
The motion and second to adjourn, all those favored, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.